It just prints it for me for some reason. Oh, because I tell it like my own mind.
I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dowell?
Here.
Mrs. Westphal?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore there is a quorum for tonight's meeting. I welcome our guests to the meeting tonight. If they have questions during the meeting, please raise your hand at the appropriate time, and I will recognize you when appropriate to get your question. With that, please join us in our pledge of allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Hanam.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a copy of the agenda on the side table if you'd like one, sir. Here. You got it, good for you. Additions to the agenda tonight, I have no additions. Mr. Frye?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hanson?
I'm on the Teamacog Pedestrian and Bike Ways Committee, and I would just like to give a brief committee report.
Okay. Let's do that as nine A. Glad to hear you're representing the city of Teamacog, and I see you're attending this Friday's annual meeting.
Yes.
That's great. Other members of City Council? Seeing none, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroyer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Ms. Price?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve our agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, and all that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and our agenda is approved for this evening. We're on to agenda item four, which is organizational, for approval of council meeting minutes from the organizational meeting and the regular meeting of January second. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the organizational meeting of council for January second, two thousand and twenty-four, that occurred immediately prior to the council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the organizational meeting minutes of January second, two thousand and twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and those organizational meeting minutes are approved. Now the regular meeting, Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move with the option of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of January second, two thousand and twenty-four, as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded for the approval of the January second council meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and those meeting minutes are approved as submitted. We're now to agenda item five, with service director's letter about the Main Street Oakland Court and McCord Road projects. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These projects are ready to go to advertising bidding, and we're looking to get consultants on board for the construction management services. Two of the projects, Main Street Reconstruction and McCord Road Resurfacing, because of the funding that we have involved in those, have to be ODOT pre-qualified contractors to do that work. Oakland Court does not need to be, but with the other two projects likely going on at the same time, I think it would probably be efficient to go ahead and utilize the same entity for that project as well. So, we asked for permission to be able to advertise for letters of interest, and then we'll be back with council for a recommended consultant to move forward with.
Right now, your intention is one consultant for all three projects?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions from City Council? This is normal procedure for us to go out with a separate engineering consultant to watch the construction and to check the shop rooms and look at the test reports. Mr. Richardson, we need a motion to approve going out and getting interest for providing this service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to authorize the administration to begin the letter of interest solicitation process for the Main Street Reconstruction, McCord Road resurfacing, and Oakland Court Improvement projects.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the city and Mr. Aller are authorized to go after those interests of providing that engineering service. Agenda item six has to do with the Silvertown Drive waterline improvements. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Silvertown Waterline is a project, the engineering at least, is a project that we included in the two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement plan. As an update to the letter, this waterline actually broke last Friday, and I couldn't have cued it any better than...
You don't really need to cue it at all, huh?
Yeah. So it is tightly, this whole waterline, obviously we're having integrity issues with it, and we'd like to move forward with its replacement. This as well, as well, we anticipate the construction engineering fee being in excess of the fifty thousand dollars, so it requires quality-based selection, and we typically do that through the letter of interest process as well. So we just ask for permission to advertise for letters of interest for the engineering of the Silvertown Drive waterline.
Is this in the capital improvement budget?
Yes.
All right. Questions for Mr. Aller? Mr. McCann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to authorize letter of interest by the administration for the authorization to begin consult, letter of interest solicitation from engineering consultants to design the project and prepare necessary construction plans.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and service directors authorized to solicit that interest from engineering consultants. Agenda item seven, you have in your council packets a copy of a liquor license. This appears to be a new liquor license, and this is for a proposed Sheets gasoline station that's currently being designed. It would be where the old IBM building, or the old ProMedica office building is, across from Olivet Lutheran Church. South side of Monroe Street, east of the Burger King. Sounds like they are. I know for a long time, that was originally built for AFC Engineering. They were one of our biggest employers in town, but AFC hasn't, has been out of business a while, has been out of that building for a long time. We've had ProMedica offices in there as the most recent one, but that was part of the big move of pre, of ProMedica office workers being moved to downtown Toledo, and that building has been vacant for some time. I have seen a preliminary site plan for it. They're working on the design, and it is a fairly large gas station with a service building that has food service in it. You may have seen other Sheets facilities. There's a one in on the Route US twenty-three going down to Columbus. There are a couple more under construction just north of Columbus. These are not mega stations. There are other brands that are bigger stations, and they do, they look pretty good from a gas station set of values. This is not approving it. They will have to come to the City Council for a special use permit to put a service station there. That has not been presented to us, but they feel pretty confident of it if they're applying for their liquor permit to go in there. Chief, do you have any reasons or any input on this? Any problems? It is right across the street from a church, but it's not a school.
It's not a school, so I think we're good. I've had no, I found no complaints with them, so...
Okay. All we're looking for is, we do not request a local hearing motion. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to not request a local hearing for the liquor per, C-one liquor permit for Ohio Springs Incorporated DBA Sheets.
Second. It's been moved and seconded not to request a local hearing for this new liquor permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. We're up to agenda item eight. You have in your council packets a pretty good list of services and fees that we require. It has, gets updated every now and then. One of them that just...
First drawn carriage.
I've got a whole lot of those, I bet. I bet you we have a lot of the, some of the other things in here. So, Mr. Aller? Or Ms. Bryant?
I will defer to Mr. Aller. He, these are, these are his fees, and he put it all together, so...
As the, as the memo indicates, it, in the past, there's been discussion about grouping all of the fees and charges that the city does into a single location. We've had some fees that we've had to increase or modify in the past, and, you know, it's, some of them are, I'll say hidden, I mean, they're not, they're not hidden, but there's a lot of text in some of the sections of the, of the codified ordinances. And to find these fees and charges, especially if you're someone from the, from the outside that doesn't deal with them on a daily basis, can be a little challenging in that time structure. So what we've done is, I basically combed through our entire codified ordinances. I believe I have found every fee or charge that we have in there, and basically, basically collected it into this document. Our intent to be, once we get this approved, reviewed and approved, that our intent would be to come back, say, every November or December, and, you know, as a staff, we would have reviewed those fees, see if any modifications could be made, and then come back to council for approval of the future year rates and fees for that following year. So, the, the way it's been put together is, just explain the regular text, that is the existing language. That's as it, that's how the fees are currently in the ordinance. Any bold text is either suggested additional fees that we, some of them we actually collect now, they just aren't addressed in the ordinance. Put them into the rates and fees charges. Or if, as I'll use an example, for in section seven fifty-five, alarm systems, that bold, those bold numbers to the right, those are what we are suggesting that we modify the fees to. And then, any strikeouts are, of course, suggested deletions with current language. I do the piece that aren't, aren't accurate anymore. They're not the way that business is done anymore, or one of a host of various reasons. The suggested fees are, we did, it's kind of a combination. We, like our TAP fees, we took a look at what our actual costs were. As we all know, things have risen pretty steadily in the last few years, so it's time for an increase in those. As well as compared some of the more administrative fees, like accepting permits and processing applications and things of that nature. We've compared those to other cities and made sure that we were in line or adjusted them to be so, if we're not. So, this is, you know, as you can see, there's draft on the pages, and this is for review and to answer any questions that you might have.
It's the administration's intent to have, to refer this to a council committee, committee of the whole for your review. There's quite a few things to think about in here, all the way from, well, the water rates and sewer rates are up to date, but the TAP fees are not. And, you know, there's also in here alarms, systems. We used to have a lot of trouble with alarms. We upped the rate before, it hasn't been up for a while. And Chief, I don't know how many of these you have to answer, but that's part of what's going on here.
Yes, since we did start fighting, it has slowed down the amount that we were responding to.
Okay. And I note that the how, how restaurant carriage fee that I referenced is not subject to an increase this time.
Notice the zoning fees and the banner fees, in particular, are pretty significant increases, and... I don't know how you, I don't know what we're gonna do with these, but I'd like to understand where those numbers come from. You know? I assume we're recouping our costs, but I would like to know that. So, Mr. President, how do you wanna?
My thought process is, this, this covers everything from soup to nuts. Every single member of council and all the committees are involved in one level or another, so my thought would be to a committee of the whole for this and to set a committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Aller, is there a particular timeframe? Obviously, presumably the sooner the better. And recognizing the number of sections of the codified ordinances that need to be adjusted, presumably to improve this. You know, I'm sure Ms. Bryant is gonna need an awful long time to be writing these appointments, or maybe break it into pieces, I don't know. So, I was considering the meeting on February the twentieth. Mr. Aller, is that okay?
That's fine. There's no, there's no rush on my part or any urgency or anything on my...
Okay. And I don't know whether we're gonna be able to do this in one sitting anyway, so we might take two. But, you know, for the purposes of what we're trying to, to adopt here, you know, taking our time doesn't seem to be the worst thought process either, so... How does that look for members of council?
It's good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
This could take a while. Six thirty, six forty-five, six thirty?
Mr. Frye, this is one of the three dates the clerk of council identified as possible for the new council portrait to be taken?
It is, Mr. Frye?
Yes.
It is, but Mr. Sanford's not able to, so we're going to look at March. So February twentieth is okay for a...
Okay.
Can you skip that?
So you are okay to have it for the twentieth?
Okay.
We'll Photoshop you, Doug.
We have a few members of council that aren't in the picture yet.
Right.
And new staff members as well.
So, six thirty, six forty-five?
I'll make a motion to set a committee, council committee of the whole for the consideration of modifying the codified ordinances, rates and fees, and consolidation into one spot for ease of use by the public on February the twentieth at six thirty here in council chambers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a committee of the whole meeting? Let me rephrase that. Moved and seconded to refer this to the committee of the whole for review and to set a meeting of that committee for Tuesday, February twentieth at six thirty p.m. with the council chair. All in favor of that, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? Gentlemen here did have a question, I don't think you saw his hand go up.
No, I didn't, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, council. Mr. Mayor, my name's Stefan Pamrenke. I live at five nine zero two Main Street, right down the street. I actually walked here and am feeling somewhat unwell because of doing that. I moved to Sylvania from Minnesota two years ago, and I came tonight to just observe and not talk. But lo and behold, the Sheets thing came up, and I missed my chance, and... chance, and I don't know why I'm talking right now, because the vote already happened. But I, I don't know, I, if, if a public hearing could happen, that would be, that would be, I think, a good idea. So I am a member of Olivet, and I am also a strong advocate for diversifying off of fossil fuels. And we have a lot of gas stations, and I know that the question is not actually about the gas station, but the liquor license. But having maybe a further discussion about that, we are a very welcoming congregation, Olivet, and we have feeding programs, and there's many places where one can get alcohol and liquor. So I'm not opposed to alcohol or liquor, but if, if it is possible to have a public hearing about this and have more public discussion, then I think that would be a good idea.
The process will provide for a public hearing. If a special use permit is a change in the zoning code, or a special use permit, and the codified ordinances require a public hearing to do that, which means the adjacent property owners will be notified. You wouldn't be on Main Street, but Olivet will be, and all the neighbors down there. And it will be publicized in the paper as well. Legal ad has to be published, and we're not trying to hide when we have a public hearing about this sort of a change. And that is, we appreciate your comments tonight, but if indeed they submit for it, that'll be the official time to hear those, those opinions.
So, so what was voted on tonight?
How the process works.
Tonight was just, they've applied for a liquor permit, which seems a little premature to us, because we don't even have a special use permit.
Oh, well, there you go.
So here's how this works. Okay. They have to file an application with the city for a special use permit to establish a gas station. That special use will come to council, and application will come to council, will refer it to the planning commission. The planning commission will evaluate it and make a recommendation. It'll come back to council. We will schedule a public hearing to get comments from the public on the recommendation of the planning commission and any other issue related to granting the special use. And only after that public hearing will we then vote yes or no to allow the gas station to go in. So there's a big process that's still ahead. This, we don't have any control over the liquor control hearing, unless we have good reason to be concerned about a specific use. We generally don't do that, because first of all, it's not our hearing anyway. It's their hearing, not ours. But we will have a real hearing on this special use before we vote as a council on that.
You can always contact me in the mayor's office as clerk of council for when that might be, but it's going to be a few months, because even if they applied today, it would be about two months.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for your, thank you for coming. Okay, we are up to agenda item nine. We have added agenda item nine A, a report from Mr. Hanson concerning his committee work at TECOG.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this was in regards to the pedestrian and bikeways committee we met this morning for the first, first time in 2024, and just wanted to, you know, kind of provide a brief, brief update. One thing that came out of this meeting, and Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you're already aware of this, but it was announced that this, this committee and all of the TECOG committees will be undergoing a organizational change or restructuring to where they will be more as special advisory boards instead of committees. It sounds like that will be discussed more at the general assembly this Friday. And in the, I guess, advisory boards, there will not be voting rights, it will be more just recommendations that are, that are sent up to TECOG leadership. Another item from this, from this meeting this morning, Bike Month is coming in May, which we participated in, I think it was two years ago already. Keith Webb was, had been leading the Ride of Silence, which is, it's in Toledo, but a ride that, you know, is to honor those that were injured or, or killed in bike rides. He is relocating, so TECOG is taking over that initiative. They will be hosting it and promoting it this year. They will have a booth at the Farmer's Market in Toledo, giving out t-shirts, and you can get a coupon for a free cup of coffee if you say you rode your bike to Farmer's Market. And then they will also be promoting Bike Safety Right Away, Bike to Work, which is May 17th of '24. So just a lot of promotional material that will probably be coming out from TECOG this year. And then lastly, Dan Marsalek from Outdoor Slovenia Community Parks was in attendance at the meeting, and he mentioned they did have received some funding through CMAC, which what they will be using to expand the University Parks Trail. That was good news. And then that's the update. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Friday is a big day of possible changes for TECOG. Those have been through some of the leadership development and the board at TECOG. They are result, a new executive director or president. Her, her title's going to change as well, but a new person as the hired head of TECOG is proposing these changes to bring us more in line with other COGS around the state and the region. So, thank you. And you're all welcome to attend that meeting. I think you all had notices emailed to you, so those that are interested are signed up, I'm sure. Are there any other committee reports or committee referrals to be made at this time? There is an informational item. It's your fourth quarter reports from last year. Are they all here? Are there some still outstanding? Okay. Take these, put in your binders, and we'll get the rest up to you as soon as they're available. If there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Mayor? Oh, Mr. McCann?
I'm sorry. Did, did we, did we set a meeting for discussion on the events permitting process paperwork that, or?
That's in zoning and annexation. I'm not sure if Mr. Hanem. Did we do what? Um, the, Mr. Aller emailed out the proposed amendment to the permit process, the block party permit and the event permits today. That was in your committee. I didn't see that. Yeah, that's okay. It was later this afternoon, so, but I don't know, I think Mr. McCann was just wondering if you wanted to set a commit, another committee meeting to review those, or? I can do that. I don't know where, how substantial is the proposal?
It's substantial.
It, it covers everything. It, it will update our ordinance.
Maybe I want to read this before I. Set a meeting.
I don't think there's a rush on it. It wasn't on tonight's agenda.
Sorry, missed that email. Working at that. Day job is a pain. Okay. But thank you, Brian, for bringing it to my attention now.
Yes, sir.
Stefan Pamrenke, I have two. I, I, wondering if we can ask questions about the bike committee? When I was living in St. Paul, Minnesota, I was on the Dayton's Bluff Bike Committee. And since moving to Slovenia, it, it's a hostile environment to bike, and it is, there's lots of wonderful bike trails, but if, if a bicyclist is attempting to actually own the lane legally and, and ride the lane, bad things happen. And, and so this is a systemic problem, systemic opportunity, and I'm just wondering if there's like an overall, large, long-term plan of how, how to make the streets safer. I, I'd be interested to hook in. I'm a family medicine doc, and have a public health background as well. The, yeah, the, the Ride of Silence is, is, it's a. It's terrible for that act basis. And I, yeah, that's weird. What, what, what systemic, long-term, five, 10-year plans are, are happening in that way?
There's a long-term, actually, it's a 30-year plan. 2055 is how far out we're planning, and, and TECOG is, which you're probably not familiar with, is Toledo metropolitan area, so it's not just Slovenia, but, but the entire Northwest Ohio, Southeast Michigan area, you know, which obviously includes Slovenia. But, you know, so there is a, there is a plan, not only for autos, but pedestrian bike, bike paths as well. We have a long way to go, for sure. We're, you know, currently documenting all of the bike paths that exist, where connections maybe could be added, and then also, you know, publicizing that information, you know, making shows of where, you know, kind of here's a bike, a bike wave map. And then to your point, I think a part of that is also just the education piece, you know. Does everybody know the signal of a cyclist when turning right or left? You know, I don't think they do. That, that's some of the work being done. We do have a long way to go, but it's, it's definitely being looked at.
I think it's being looked at right here in the city of Slovenia, as well as we're looking at construction projects that.
There is an "aye" too, taking into consideration safety and biking. Mr. Aller, you might be able to speak to that a little bit better than I.
We have, Mark, the, the TECOG, if you go to the TECOG website, there's actually a Slovenia area bikeway and pedestrian plan on there, and it kind of shows some things that Dan Marsalek, Outdoor Slovenia, Slovenia Township, Lucas County Engineer, ourselves, we, we all sat down and tried to put together improvements that needed to be made. So some of those improvements are, well, not some, all of those improvements are shown on the map, as well as what exists currently. So, but yeah, that, that's on there. You could call our office, and they can get a copy of it to you, but either way, so.
We've also historically adopted some changes to our zoning code to accommodate bike parking and promote bicycle use. So it's not, I think we've identified this as an ongoing issue, and there are some plans. We, we all know we have more work to do.
Yeah, I, my daughter goes to Arbor Hills, and we would like to Arbor Hills, like the background. Monroe is, is a no-go. And so, anyway, it's, it's great to know that there are plans. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your questions.
Okay. If there's no further items for discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved that seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and this council is adjourned until its next meeting scheduled for Monday, February the 5th at 7:30 PM. That's three weeks from now. This council stands adjourned. Thank you for attending and for your comments.